Good morning. Welcome to the July 18th, 2023, meeting of the Board of Commissioners for Blue Earth County. If you can, please stand and say your pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, proclamation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with your agenda review, Bob.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
Move approval?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Passes. Get in with our planning and zoning. First item on the agenda for planning and zoning, and the planning and zoning staff are here to present their action items. I'll ask the planning and zoning staff to please introduce themselves for the record and introduce the first item before the board.
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Scott Salisbury, Property Environmental Resources. I'm a land use planner. And the first item on the agenda is PC 19-23. It's a review of a petition for an environmental assessment worksheet, otherwise known as an EAW, for an aggregate mine or accessory uses in the southeast quarter of Section 6 Rapidan Township. The property is owned by Paradise Valley Trust, and the applicant is W. Lorenz Construction. On June 20th, 2023, the county Board of Commissioners tabled the interim use permit to allow a potential petition for an environmental assessment worksheet to be processed by the Environmental Quality Board. We received the official notice from the EQB on July 5th, 2023, that the petition was received and that Blue Earth County is the responsible governmental unit to decide whether an EAW is needed for the project. The petition for the EAW included a list of potential environmental effects, including water contamination, dust, noise pollution, wildlife impacts, truck traffic, potential contamination from the recycling of concrete and batuminous, disruption of Native American artifacts, disruption of use and enjoyment of a county park, disruption of the use and enjoyment of numerous homes in the nearby residential areas, and decreased property values. The applicant submitted information to county staff on July 11th, 2023, regarding items identified in the petition. Staff reviewed the petition and the information submitted by the applicant, related studies, data, and guidance from the UQB and EAW rules, and staff is recommending that the petition be approved and then an EAW be ordered for the project. Since last week and since the packet came out, yesterday, I believe you were all CC'd on a letter from the applicant's attorney, Mr. Matthew Berger, about the EAW, the petition, and our findings. Let's see. The letter states that, regarding a number of the studies, he states that these studies do not support the petition's claim that the proposed Nelson pit may have a potential for significant environmental impacts later to groundwater contamination or drawdown. Also states that the study that's referenced there found that there was no significant impact on groundwater levels from mining at all pits where de-watering does not occur, and the proposed application does not include de-watering. Mr. Berger's letter also stated that the proposed findings that the proposed Nelson pit may have the potential impacts to groundwater and groundwater flow direction because the proposal includes mining into the Jordan sandstone. He states that this is factually incorrect. While the permit application estimates that mining will terminate at a bottom elevation of approximately 820, the application materials further clarify that the actual mining depths will be dependent on site conditions. Just wanted to hand out just for the record, this is the geotechnical profile that was submitted by the applicant, and we'll describe that a little bit later here while that's being passed around. Mr. Berger's letter states that, "To the extent that the lower portion of the proposed vertical section includes material that is classified as Jordan sandstone, this material is highly deteriorated," and in parentheses says, "If it were not, it would be impossible for Lorenz to remove it based on the proposed permit." Thus, the fact on which the draft resolution, our premise, are not supported by evidence in the record and are not factually correct. As you can see, the geotechnical profile that we passed around here is from the applicant's application. It was prepared by ISG, and it's got a front and back. I include the back just because it zooms in on the backside. And what that shows, it shows the bottom of the pit, on the bottom of the page, at an elevation of about 820. And then above that, the Jordan sandstone formation. So the bottom 15 feet of the proposed mine is the Jordan sandstone formation. So that's the application information that we have, and that's consistent with county geologic atlas, as well as surrounding wells and well logs. So 15 feet there. So clearly, you know, this 15 feet, the total mine is 45 feet deep, so the Jordan sandstone represents a third of the elevation of the proposed pit. So Mr. Berger's letter, you know, claimed that it was kind of accidental that they would be in the Jordan sandstone. Based on the information we have, and it's Jordan sandstone, it sure seems like 15 feet is significant. The profile actually shows the aggregate above there is silty sand, sand with silt, sand with gravel, silty sand. So those, you know, top 30 feet there would be the aggregate that would be mined. Mr. Berger's letter also references some of the DNR studies and that talk about de-watering. So the top 30 feet are really the alluvial deposits, so the aggregate materials that would be deposited by river systems up on the top. The bottom is the bedrock. So the DNR studies find, if you, the conclusion of the hydrologic impacts on quarries and gravel pits, their main finding related to gravel pits that didn't de-water was, "Our monitoring found no negative impacts on groundwater levels from sand and gravel pits and alluvial deposits that operate below the water table but do not de-water." So that would be the area, the top 30 feet. Their findings do not relate to the bottom 15 feet, which is the Jordan sandstone. That study also references limestone quarries. It didn't study sandstone quarries, but did limestone quarries and with quarries that didn't de-water. Also, it found that groundwater flow paths could be altered if there weren't de-watering, and that breaching of the limestone conduits without active de-watering in the quarry. So if there wasn't de-watering, but they're removing that material, it could still impact groundwater. So our findings in the resolution are based on these studies, which were referenced by the petition. So again, the top 30 feet there is aggregate materials that's in alluvial deposited by, you know, rivers. Bottom 15 feet is bedrock. And so that Jordan sandstone, just a couple, I'm not a geologist, but we found some other studies there that describe it, and the dam removal feasibility study from Bar Engineering in 2021 says the dam and powerhouse are founded on Jordan sandstone, which is an easily erodible bedrock formation. The Army Corps of Engineers study from 2009 said that the dam was constructed within the Jordan sandstone formation, which has been found to be highly friable and permeable in places. So it's soft in nature. So at the dam, where people can carve their initials in the sandstone, that's the Jordan sandstone. So it is soft. So the implications that they can't mine in this material because it's bedrock, or if it's not bedrock because it's soft, well, it is Jordan sandstone, it is soft, and other places in the county, it has been mined without explosives or blasting. So it is a soft bedrock formation. The information that they provide in the geotechnical form profile is also consistent with well logs. So the county park well at the campground, which is just north of the site, that found the elevation of Jordan sandstone at 829 feet. The county well at the dam found Jordan sandstone at 853 feet at an elevation, so it's consistent with what we've had submitted in the application. Mr. Berger's letter also points out concerns that we handled this application differently than a gravel pit that's on the item later in the agenda. It's true that different items, that different application requirements were required of the Lorenz pit than the other item. We, our county code spells out general criteria for applications for an interim use permit that are required to be done. So for mines, we need a site plan, we need a mining plan, a business plan, a reclamation plan, and a description of the whole operation. Well, our site plan requirements also allow us to have other information when required based on the actual proposal. So a noise study was done for this proposal, it wasn't done for the other application. There are several items that are oftentimes required on one gravel pit, may not be required on another, or with a fee lot or an interim use permit for short-term rental. Many different applications that we have come in have different application requirements that are just site-specific, based on concerns that are related to the actual location or the operation. Mr. Berger's letter points out that the other application is actually larger than this one. That's not true. The parcel size for the other application is 37 acres, which is what he specified in his letter. So this site is 25 acres, it's proposed to be mined. The Pentagon Mine later in the agenda is 18.6 acres. The life expectancy on this pit is 20 years compared to 10. The number of houses within a quarter mile, there's 12 on this site. The other mine, there's just two. This site is in shoreline of the Blue Earth River. The other application is not in shoreline, it's close to shoreline, but it's not with, the actual mine is not within shoreline. This site is adjacent to a county park, is adjacent to a campground, the other site is not. So we have different criteria that we looked at, and our code also requires us to have site-specific conditions on an interim use permit. Any permit that we have coming in should have conditions that are related to that site. So there's conditions that we were proposing with the Lorenz pit that we weren't proposing for the Pentagon Mine and vice versa. So each site is unique. So in the packet, there is a resolution. The findings in the resolution are based on the requirements of Minnesota rules, EAW rules. The findings have been drafted by county staff with assistance from the county attorney's office. It's a great deal of help with us in drafting those findings, and we addressed all the requirements that are required in the EAW rules. The board action is a passage of a resolution based on the findings to have an EAW completed.
Thank you, Scott. If the applicant would like to make comments regarding the EAW, we could hear them now, please stand up, give your name.
Matthew Berger with Gisselson and Hunter, attorney for the applicant in this matter. Our letter speaks for itself from yesterday. I believe that the process that has been used for this permit, requiring all of the studies, is far different than the other. The one clarification I want to make is on the geotechnical profile that was referenced and the amount of bedrock. What we're talking about here is levels of materials that are several feet underground. The profiles are based on estimates, based on the best available information. What I want to be clear about is, our engineers indicate, and, you know, I believe the record supports, we cannot and will not, cannot mine intact Jordan sandstone. We're not blasting, we're not drilling, it can't be done. Now, when there's references to Jordan sandstone in there, what's being referenced is, over time, edges of that material can break up. So it's really gravel, it's not intact bedrock. And if it's already deteriorated to the point that it can be mined, that would be part of the proposal. But we're not proposing any blasting that would allow mining of intact bedrock. So if we get down 30 feet in one spot and run into intact bedrock, it remains intact. So relying on a profile that is one profile assessing a larger site does not factually address the reality on the ground, that the proposal, it does not include blasting, the bedrock cannot be mined. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any comments from the board?
At this point?
And I'm open for taking a motion?
I move the resolution to require an EAW.
I'll second.
I've got a motion and a second to require an EAW. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So Scott, thank you for that report. That was very helpful to me, and the emails that went back and forth last night with Matthew and your staff was very helpful to me. I do struggle a little bit with this because of the fact that they are kind of two different projects, but could you just maybe elaborate a little more on, it kind of sounds like we're at a water issue. We've done all the other studies, we've done the traffic study, we've done the noise study. Can you just help me out and help me understand why we'd want to take it to the next step when those studies have all been done, and why can't we pull out this limestone issue and deal with that at more of a one-on-one issue instead of reopening up the whole thing? Can you help me out with that?
Sure. Yeah, good question. So when we're reviewing the petition for an EAW, we're reviewing, is there potential for significant environmental impact? And on the groundwater side, that was the one issue that we found, that there is potential. We don't know, it could impact groundwater or it could not, but that would be additional study that would be required to make that determination. With the noise study, traffic study, wetland delineation, stormwater plans, those items would be addressed in the EAW. There wouldn't be additional information required for those studies, but in the EAW process, those studies are reviewed by agencies, state and federal agencies, to get more input to make the determination of the overall potential environmental impacts. Like, so right now with those studies, county staff has reviewed those. So in the interim use permit process, typically, we don't have reviews of the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, the Department of Health, only DNR review in shoreline, and on this case, we haven't had that review yet. But there would be the opportunity in the EAW for those studies to be reviewed in more detail by more people to make that decision about the potential significant environmental impacts of a proposal.
So with that, if we move forward to this EAW, and we don't have anything alarming from all of these other agencies, and I appreciate that, another set of eyes looking at this, the county staff, maybe not be the experts at this, looking at a report we get from a noise study or a traffic study, you're all very good at it, but you might not have that expertise. So as it moves through those processes, if it comes back without any other red flags, would be pretty hard to deny this permit at that point, would be my assumption?
Well, so the EAW process, yeah, is not an approval process. It doesn't approve or deny a project. It's about information gathering. So if we do any EAW and don't find significant environmental impacts, those items are brought forward in, whether it's an interim use or a conditional use, but in that permit review process, those would be a cornerstone or the foundation of those findings to approve or deny that permit. So that information will be helpful in that process, is what I'm trying to say.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, and Scott, but also doesn't the EAW, one of the things that it may say is that in EIS, environmental impact statement would be required then? I mean, that would be the next step?
Yep.
I mean, that's a possibility as well.
Yeah, that's really the primary purpose of it, is to determine whether an EIS environmental impact statement.
And if that answer is no, and there's not any harm to the environment, at that's the point then where?
Correct.
You look specifically at the permit.
Correct, yep.
We have to answer those two questions first, EAW, and then is there EIS needed?
Correct, exactly.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Any other questions, Mr. Chair?
You know, anytime we can get more information on what's going on before, so we can make a logical, a good, sound decision, to me is a good idea. If there's no more discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. That passes.
Thank you, Scott.
Next report is PC 1523. Go ahead.
John Considine, Senior Land Use Planner.
Thank you.
My pleasure. PC 15-23 is a request for review and approval of interim use permit from Thomas Keel to operate a mechanic shop as a Level 2 home occupation in the Conservation District. Property is in the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 32 Garden City Township. The location address is 1668 5-510th Avenue, Lake Crystal, Minnesota 56055. At the Planning Commission meeting, staff presented the report, and there was no comment from the applicant, and there was no comment from the public. The Planning Commission had no questions or concerns regarding the proposal. In following discussion, the Planning Commission, by roll call vote, voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval of the request to the county board based on the findings and conditions recommended by staff. And the board action proposed this morning is passage of the resolution based on the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open the public comment portion of the hearing. If you would like to make comment regarding PC 1523, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. If anybody is wishing to come and comment on PC 1523, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. And for the last time, anyone wishing to comment on PC 1523. Now we'll close the public comment portion. Is there any comments from the board?
I don't have any questions or comments, Mr. Chair.
If not, I will entertain a motion and a second?
I would move the passage of the resolution based on the recommendation by the Planning Commission?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. And that passes. Planning and zoning staff, PC 2023.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am George Leary with Blue Earth County Planning and Zoning. PC 20-23 is a request from Trank LLC and Pentagon Materials Incorporated. It's a request for review and approval of an interim use permit for an aggregate mining operation. Activities will include extraction, crushing, screening, washing, and stockpiling of aggregate materials. The proposal also includes recycling of concrete and asphalt products. The property is owned conservation and includes a small area of shoreline of the Cobb River. The property is in part of the east half of the southwest quarter of Section 19 Decoria Township. Staff presented the report, the applicant was present and provided a brief synopsis of his company, their locations, and the intended use of the aggregate intended to be mined. He also indicated their intention to modify the working hours of Monday through Friday to 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and to move a sedimentation basin from the southeast corner to the middle of the site, which will help reduce runoff from the site. A resident asked for more information on Trank LLC, who they are and where they are from. He said he had searched online but couldn't find anything. The applicant indicated that Dennis and Jason Loken are the owners of the LLC. A commission member provided information he found on his phone regarding Trank LLC on the Minnesota Secretary of State website. Another resident asked if the proposed improvement to the township road would change the setback requirements to the road. A staff member indicated there would be no change. Another resident expressed his appreciation for the compromises offered by the applicant. There was no further public comment. Members of the Planning Commission discussed the proposal. The focus of the discussion was on the inclusion of the request from Decoria Township to include nine items of condition of approval they had provided to county staff. A commission member suggested that the nine items provided by the Decoria Township could be attached to condition number H that had been prepared by staff. One commission member expressed concerns with the road and mining in the Conservation Zone District, and briefly opined on the environmental impact of mines in general. There was no further discussion. Following the discussion, the Planning Commission, by a roll call vote, voted five in favor to one opposed, to forward a recommendation of approval of the request to the county board based on the findings and conditions recommended by staff, with an amendment to condition H to include the nine items requested by the township, and to amend the working hours to reflect the amended hours presented by the applicant. Staff is recommending the original conditions provided to the Planning Commission, with no additional conditions as requested by the township. Staff's opinion is the original condition H adequately addresses the township agreement with the applicant and allows the township the ability for any future enforcement if necessary. The board action is passage of the resolution based on the recommendation of property and environmental resources staff. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
At this time, we'll open the public comment portion of the hearing. If you would like to make a comment regarding PC 2023, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to speak on PC 2023?
My name is Jim Voda, and I'm here representing Pentagon Materials Incorporated, and just wanted to let you know we're here and available if there's any questions that need to be answered.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on PC 2023? And for the last time, anyone wishing to speak on PC 2023? Now we'll close the public comment portion. Any comments from the board?
I think we kind of went over this one a little bit with the first one we talked about, so I don't have any questions. I needed those clarifications, and I appreciate that from the staff.
Yep. If not, I entertain a motion and a second? I move.
I'll second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. That passes. PC 2123.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. PC 21-23 is a request for review and approval of a preliminary and final plat of the South Shore subdivision by the John F. Just Senior Family Cabin Trust and the Sandra Lynn Sante Revocable Trust. The plat will create two lots from an area not currently platted in lots 1 and 2, and a portion of Lot 3 of Hillside Lake Washington. The properties are zoned rural residence and located within the shoreline of Lake Washington. The properties are in the northeast quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 19 Jamestown Township. The addresses of the two resulting lots are 4120 Hillside Lane Madison Lake and 4122 Hillside Lane Madison Lake. At the Planning Commission, staff presented the report, and there was no comment from the applicant, and there was no comment from the public. The Planning Commission had no questions or concerns regarding the proposal. Following discussion, the Planning Commission, by roll call vote, voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval of the request to the county board based on the findings and conditions recommended by staff. The board action this morning on this item is passage of the resolution based on the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open the public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to make a comment regarding PC 2123, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to speak to PC 2123?
Good morning. Mark Braun. We're at 2125 Peregrine in North Mankato, but also will be at 4122 Hillside, and my wife, Chris Just Braun, is owner of the Just property, and we're just here to answer questions.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Is there anyone else wishing to make a comment on PC 2123? And for the last time, anyone wishing to make a comment on PC 2123? For now, we will close the public comment portion. We'll bring it back to the board. Any questions from the board?
I don't have any.
No questions for me, I would make that motion.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. And that passes.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Got all your excitement there.
We just have Matt today, or is the other staff coming too? Do you know?
I assume Nancy and...
You just have Matt, Mr. ...
You're up there, Phil.
I'm ready.
Yep.
Just in time.
Just in time.
Just in time. Go ahead. Just in time service. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I have two action items for your attention today. The first, being in Children and Family Services, Midwest Monitoring and Surveillance, they provide alcohol and drug testing, the monitoring supplies for us. Also provide complimentary training to our staff to ensure that we follow the right protocols, which is important in this regard for the courts. Rates are standardized, but the vendor also resets rates to the lowest possible when compared with competitors. This is a new agreement with this particular vendor, and the agreement starts July 1st of this year through July 1st of '25. And then my second item, Mr. Chair, financial assistance, Lingua One. This is a renewal of a contract for interpreting services. The contract enables us to fulfill our statutory responsibility in the following areas, and I will not read through them all. The first one, though, is a significant increase just because there is a limit of vendors, and I think this is still fair to say it's well within a standard rate. And then a lot of the others have not changed, but we provided those for the board. The term of this contract, July 1st of '23 through December 31st of '24. And those are my action items for today.
Sure.
I'll move the action items.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? That passes. Go ahead with your informational...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, I have some detox data that I think is very self-explanatory. We've been concerned about the increase year over year from 2020, but there has been a trending back down projected for this year, so we hope that continues. There are some strategies behind that, working with our detox providers directly and trying to look for alternatives to holding people, especially longer stays in detox, which can get very expensive. You'll see also the breakout of the second slide, the cost analysis of what we get in return or fees collected. And in this past year in '22, it was $147,000 against about $500,000 of additional expense that weren't covered in any way, direct levy. Then the board is familiar with Yellow Line. There's a lot of activities. Julie Steenmer provided us a review of some of the basic components. You'll see the three primary goals, which really haven't changed, to improve access, to increase timely engagement for services, and then to reduce the jailed bed days overall. The current pathways are next. We do a lot more street-level deflection, as much as we possibly can with law enforcement. Some of the pre-booking diversion, if we are able to screen and provide alternatives to law enforcement for people getting services, maybe rather than getting charged or with getting charged, we really don't distinguish those two options. And then when somebody's incarcerated, depending on what the status is, obviously working with Pat's office about if we can help get people out in a timely manner, that would be a third pathway as well. The longer narrative, I'll just run through very briefly the first bullet, really about that we did get care coordination covered as an MA benefit. Nancy Celewski is in the room with us, and Matt Mossman have really helped us with Yellow Line and especially in this regard to try to get through to the federal level, through the state level, and the support we needed to get something added to the Minnesota MA covered benefits that was a task that took long suffering and commitment, but we did get there. We are successfully billing. It's foot-in-the-door approach. It's not a lot of money at this point, but we hope that we can establish this as a mainstream into the future. And also, we were able to, with help from our state legislators, no longer have the county pay the non-federal share of the costs, so that was also a plus. We continue to, I mean, it says mentor other projects, but I think it's really a comparative notes because everybody has a little different take on how to do diversion and deflection. In May of this year, we hosted a group of 23 people from the Rural Justice Collaborative. The Rural Justice Collaborative is out of Arlington, Virginia, but Indiana, Texas, Arizona, and Nebraska are all represented in the room, and they did come here. Our multidisciplinary team talked about all the different pieces of law enforcement in the courts and social service and how we work together. It was a good meeting. Really good meeting. And there's other people inquiring out there, too. So it's exciting. I think it keeps us sharp. It's a mutual thing. Community-based coordinators completed a GAPS analysis. We're trying to do continuous quality improvement. Their focus was on how do we improve outreach and education, our collaborative outreach, and that's our regular meeting that we get together and try to proactively look at high-end cases together. And then partnering, again, like I said, with detox, law enforcement, and all the housing coordinators in our community as well. So those were our kind of target areas to try to keep improving ourselves. Last bullet ends with right service at the right time, which is kind of what we were talking about earlier. And so that is our mantra, our bumper sticker. Some of the specific numbers, I think 2022 was a skewed year, of course, with COVID, but we did screen 410 people, and all of them were operative information and referral. 172 were referred for direct services, and 50 of those engaged. You'll see the summary of the data, that 40% of the participants that did engage successfully completed their plan. I think that's a decent number overall, given the population has a lot of issues going on at once. 84% of the participants had no known law enforcement contact six months after, and almost 50% had no contact almost a year after. So again, given the risk of the population, I think those are good outcome measures. And speaking of that, Mr. Chair, just a comment on, so Minnesota Office of Management and Budget has undertaken Yellow Line as one of their evidence-based projects. So Ange and I have been talking to them for probably 18 months. It's been a long period where they scientifically study. And what we always say in our business is we have nothing to compare it to. If you give somebody cash assistance or if you help them in mental health, in order to say if it works or not, you have to not offer that to somebody and measure that. And so there's an ethical dilemma about all of that. What they were able to do is find a control group of county or counties that were like ours in Minnesota that do not have a diversion program, and then compare that population did not get served to what we have been doing. And there are two areas that were interesting to us, is engagement, so kind of that first piece that we offered screenings. And just the screening itself seems to be a very important finding, that the access to that kind of review was very significant statistically. And they also went after recidivism, which is always a word I'm careful about because of how you measure it, how you define it, those types of things. But they also found that, given our population, that was a high risk, and in our county, we were kind of in a harder position than a lot of other counties when compared, just to start. So we came out of that hole and also statistically went above that with performance as far as not having the repeat offenses. Yeah, so really good outcomes. They published it yesterday. Bob and I have been talking about this for months because it keeps saying, "Oh, anytime, anytime." It got published, so that's good. And so, you know, we've already applied to be part of AMC Conference. John Marsalik reached out about possibly presenting at the Corrections Conference. We definitely will do max. I would like to say we'll definitely do a local, you know, community meeting on the findings as well, so it's a good thing.
Wonderful. Thanks for all that.
That...
You know, we've been at this for quite a while, and it's nice to see that the Yellow Line project is doing what we expect. I mean, I'm seeing some of the numbers, and I think those numbers look good.
Yeah.
You know, anytime we can give people the information and that there is other options than to continue on with crime and stuff, super. And as we all know, that a very large percentage of people have mental health issues and problems before they go in, if they can get help with that, you know, we can maybe stop some of this.
And, Mr. Chair, I do want to just thank the board because, even though we've had some turnover, that everyone has been very supportive of our efforts here, kind of building in the dark. Again, Nancy's always so gracious about talking about our partnership, but, you know, it took years through legislative effort, blood, sweat, and tears to get there, and she was with us the whole way. So certainly Senator Prince and Senator Rosen were big champions of this as well.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just a question, Phil, and just to refresh my memory.
Yes.
Most of this has been funded with federal and state grants, correct?
Yeah, so we started with a state grant just because it was entrepreneurial, and we asked for just one-time money, and so that's how we got launched. We actually are able, this funding source is, you know, not enough to fill our boat with the two staff that we have on right now, but the savings in state hospital costs and what was detox were more than enough to say that we're ahead of the game as far as a business model goes, that it's cost-effective because you save money by not using that high-end care. And so that, I think, does hold water. And that is actually, Commissioner, one of the biggest questions we're asked, which is what's the utility and how does it affect the bottom line? And I think we have a very, very strong picture of that.
Yeah, that's what's nice about getting a program off the ground with some federal funding, because that's what the board struggles with, is using levy dollars to start a program like that and it not be successful. Now, when you have something to compare it to...
Right.
It's a little more easy to understand it.
Right, and we've all been around the block where you set up something, it doesn't have any sustainable funding behind it, and the first time the economy goes south, those are the first to get clipped. Whereas if we can get this MA service set going and build a rate that actually can sustain, that would be full security. Right now, I'd say we're partially secure in that, and our savings, I think, you know, from a business model, it would be foolish not to do this work because it's cost-effective. It's absolutely cost-effective.
Sure. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good to see you all.
Good to see you, Phil. Thank you.
And we can jump into administration. Bob?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is county board minutes for July 11th.
So moved?
Second.
Got a motion and a second and discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same?
Thank you.
Next would be the bills for just one week of this meeting.
I'll move the bill.
Second.
Got a motion and a second and any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Passes.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number five in your packet is the Human Resources Department agenda. Just have one action item for the board's consideration today, and that is authorization to initiate recruitment for a probation officer one in our Community Corrections Department. This is a request based on the fact that additional CCA funding was authorized by the legislature starting in state fiscal year '24, I guess, which is July 1st of this year. So we are receiving an additional $994,000, I believe. We have received from the department a request for three additional positions. This is part of the 2024 budget request. This is a juvenile position that the department would like to start before the school year to start to position us well to receive referrals to the department to deal with juvenile issues in our schooling. So this would be one of those three additional positions that have been requested. So it's an early filling request of one of those three new position requests. Okay, happy to answer any questions the board might have on this.
Looking for a motion? Mr. Chair, I so moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Yes? I would just add, I guess I'm not a big fan of not going through the right process and timeline and stuff like this, but this clearly is an exception. Looking at a school year versus a fiscal year, calendar year, or anything else, I think it's our advantage to have that before the school year starts, so would support this.
And the fact that it's coming with the new funding already, so good point, Commissioner.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Passes.
Under informational items, just a couple items there. We did receive a resignation of a child protection specialist in our Human Services Department, and so we have initiated recruitment to refill that position. Item number six in your packet, then, is the financial status report for June 30th. We're halfway through our fiscal year. So you'll see that our total revenues are at $53.7 million against expenses of just under $47 million. So well positioned at this point in the year. Some things to maybe note is that our state and federal revenues are lagging a little bit behind our expectation in our budget and also below what we received last year, although I think the last year numbers were inflated due to the ARP funds that we received. We are seeing some better investments, our interest on our investments, so that's a good thing. Our transportation sales tax revenue continues to outperform our budget by a little bit. Terms of our local tax levy, we did receive receipts that are a little more than half of what we expected, so we obviously are seeing some prepayments of that second-half tax there as well. On the expenditure side, our public aid assistance and personal services are a little bit above our budget target at this point, but that is being offset by a number of other line items there, biggest one being those contracting fees with our road projects. So overall, sitting pretty well at this point in the year. Don't see any major challenges down the road. Terms of the enterprise fund, the Ponderosa landfill, you'll see that total revenues are about $2.3 million against expenses of $1.8. So again, sitting in a positive situation there. Obviously, with the additional cell development that's occurring at the landfill, we will see land improvements come in higher this year than they did last year, and so that will eat away at some of that overall experience. On the cash and investment balances, you'll see our six-month operating needs are at $58.6 million. Our total available funds then sit at $62.3 million, so we are a little bit above our target in that area. The total county funds then sits at $133 million. The only other thing I'd maybe draw your attention to is in the dedicated funds, the second line down, the Law Library. We have been running a deficit in that account for a few years now. We have adjusted some fees and have finally crawled out of the deficit, so kudos to the county attorney and the Law Library Board for making adjustments there that have resulted in getting us right side in that area. Be happy to answer any questions the board might have about the financial status report.
Looks good.
Yep.
All right. Well, we have our MICA people here today. If you wish to come on up and give us an update for, that would be amazing.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Nice trip down.
Nice trip down.
It was a fantastic trip down. It's always a beautiful drive down here, it was a great morning.
Minnesota River Valley is gorgeous.
It is gorgeous.
If you could each give your name and your position for the people out that are watching this.
Absolutely. Mr. Chairman.
Ready for autographs when you leave.
Yeah. I'm sure people will be swarming in.
Matt Mossman, I am the Executive Director of the Minnesota Inner County Association, which Blue Earth County is a member of and represents 15 of the larger counties in Minnesota, not including Hennepin and Ramsey, in your interest at the State Capitol.
Okay.
Good morning, I'm Nancy Seleski, and I do both public health and, and human services for MICA for a number of years. Nice to be here, nice to meet you.
Thank you. Steve Novak, I handle transportation for MICA.
Thank you. Well, thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, and just at, at the front, I want to thank you for your, your participation, your continued membership in MICA, and to Commissioner People and Brander, in particular for your service on the MICA Board of Directors. You know, you all know well that county govern- the work of county government is heavily influenced by the, the mandates and the expectations in many ways that the state puts in place for counties to administer, and that at times those expectations are less well-funded than at other times. This legislative session was a very successful session for county governments in terms of the state stepping up with the surplus that was available, as well as with new revenues that we will talk about, to support the work that county governments do on behalf of the state of Minnesota and on behalf of the, the residents of your counties. So we're going to touch on some of those. To be honest, we are not going to be able to get into all of the detail. We have a 60-plus page report that is on our website and available to you and your staff that summarizes the items just that are impacting county governments that happened this legislative session. I would also note that very shortly after session, we actually took all of MICA's platform items and put them into a document where you can see from the document, and we have copies available to share as well, where there's a checkmark by almost two-thirds of the items in the platform as indicating progress that we have made. I think, I'm not sure if you, I realized I should have started with those, but we have handouts of the, of the PowerPoint presentation also. Mr. Chair and members, if we go to the next slide, I do most of my time as part of the MICA team with the taxes and some of the fiscal policy items. I just want to highlight for you the state budget as a whole and sort of where we fit into that, because the condition of the state budget drives the potential for us to be successful and, in the legislative session. As you will recall, 2022 ended without much action by the legislature, $12 billion of surplus carried forward to grow to about 17 and a, grow to about 17 and a half billion dollars. And then, you know, with that, the legislature raised some taxes and lowered some taxes in the general fund, but on net, taxes in the general fund will decline by about $2 billion in the next biennium for '24, '25, the state biennium, and spending will increase by about 14 billion or about 25%. I'm going to focus on the next slide, mostly on that $973 million. Almost a billion dollars of property tax relief was included in this upcoming biennium, which is the largest package of property tax relief in many years. The only other thing I will highlight on this page is if you drop down to the blue line where you, where you see that 1.566 billion dollars there for the end of session, 2023, end of session for fiscal year '24, '25, with all of those changes, the legislature ended the session with over $1.5 billion yet on the bottom line, which is very important as we look forward to next session, in the hopes of, of another bonding bill, as they should be timed here in even numbered years. So if we go to the next slide, I just want to highlight parts of that property tax relief that are particularly impactful for the work that you all do. We put a high priority on county program aid being something that had to be increased this session. It's over, was over $150 million a year below it had been if county aids had just kept pace with inflation. We asked for that $150 million. The House led the, the charge, the governor proposed money, the Senate proposed money, the House really led the charge by putting $100 million in, and we ended up with an $80 million annual increase beginning in calendar '24 in county program aid. Public safety aid, one-time aid of $300 million, $90 million will go to counties and tribal governments. Local housing aid, this is a new statewide annual aid program that will go to county and city, large city governments across the state to support the work that's done in housing at, at the local level, and that's infrastructure-oriented projects, not, not the service, housing services which are funded elsewhere. Soil and water conservation districts will get $15 million a year for two years, and then it will drop down to $12 million a year. This goes along with a conversation that had been going on for many years, where soil and water conservation administrative money was funded from the Clean Water Fund on a sort of one-time basis, and this gives a permanent funding source for SWCDs. And then SCORE grants, we finally made some progress after decades of trying to get some of the, the revenue that goes into the general fund from the solid waste management tax. That tax was put in place over 30 years ago with the intention that it fund SCORE grants and recycling and waste reduction. 30% of it has always gone into the state general fund and never found its way to those types of activities. We now have more of that money, 3% of that money being shifted into county grants, about a 20% increase in, in annual SCORE grants for counties. I just want to highlight in the middle of the page, there's also a lot of direct relief, which we support but don't directly lobby on. It doesn't come to county governments, but the legislature put in place for taxes increases that property taxpayers or renters might have experienced from 2022 to 2023. There will be a 20.57% one-time increase in homeowner and renter refunds for 2023 only. That's the income-based refunds that happen. There's also an increase in the targeted homeowner refunds, which is the non-income-based refund, so for 2023 only, any homeowner who experienced a property tax increase from 2022 to 2023, that is over 6% from one, from, from one year to the next, will be eligible for a refund up to $2,500. And that's an enrichment from the, the base law program and available for '23 only. Then the renters credit is going to be more effective because it'll be going forward on a permanent basis, because it will be a refundable income tax credit as, as opposed to a separate application that needs to be filled out, which is also anticipated to result in higher refunds, and of course homeowner refunds will, will also boosted a bit. Market value credit exclusion was also expanded so that there will be more ongoing homeowner property tax relief going forward, along with an expansion of the senior deferral program. And then finally, I know I'm talking fast, but there's a lot of ground to cover. We were grateful for $125 million, which I think is the largest ever state investment into broadband grants over the next two-year period. That's in addition to the federal money, of course, that'll come to the state of Minnesota for broadband grants also. If we go to the next slide, we just put together a slide for Blue Earth County that shows what this means for you all, and a number of those program areas, you can see the 1.1 million dollars a year in county program aid, that's ongoing. Public safety aid, that 1.1 million is one-time. The local housing aid, the SWCD aid, SCORE grants will be about 20% higher, and as Bob mentioned, nearly a million dollars a year in county CCA appropriation money. There's a slight decrease in one, adjustment to one program aid, the homeless prevention aid. So I'm going to, I'll pause there for any questions. I'm going to talk a bit at the end on community corrections and some other things, but otherwise, if there's no questions right now, I would turn it over to Steve to talk about transportation and transit, which was a significant part of the legislative session.
Well, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's always nice to be in Blue Earth County, and we'll give you a transportation report, which is quite positive. And the chairman and I, I know, spent, I think we've lost track of the hours we've spent in transportation meetings in the last 10 years, but finally some things have paid off, so let me outline them for you.
Persistence.
Persistence, yeah. First of all, the session got off to a very positive start way back in January with an individual bill that passed to start to provide significant state money as set aside match money for the federal dollars coming in through the federal infrastructure plan over the next four years. And they allocated at that time $316 million in a separate bill for that purpose, so that, that set a very positive tone to get us going. Then to just outline the macro version of what I'll give you the details on over the next few minutes, basically we'd focus on three things. The transportation finance bill, which was given a billion-dollar target. The trunk highway bonds, significant additional money for trunk highway bonds. And then finally, we hadn't had a bonding bill since 2020. Last year, we were here talking about the frustrations with the lack of action and all of that, and we ended up with a, a record bonding bill, 1.5 billion in bonds in addition to 1.1 billion in cash for a $2.6 billion capital investment fund. So combined, that will be 3.8 billion in ongoing dedicated revenue over the next four years. I can tell you right up front that Blue Earth County will be receiving about, a blended average of about 20% per year over the next four years, which is significant. And so let me go into the details on this. In terms of the omnibus transportation budget bill, the billion-dollar bill, what's interesting about it is that 850 million, the billion, was basically spent in seven areas, and I'll just list them for you. There was a transfer to the trunk highway fund of 152.6 million dollars. There was an additional 216 million to go with the 316 million of state matching money to guarantee that all of the federal possibilities for funding over the next four years have their 20% state match in place. We're talking significant infrastructure investment there in roads and bridges and transit and so on and so forth, so that's, that's major. Then whether you like it or not, and I'm not saying which one it should be, but the NXL train to Duluth was given 194 million in state money, which means that it will also get significant federal matches, and I, I think it's no longer a question of if that train will be built and run, but it's a, it's a determination of when it will happen over the next two to three years, so we will see that occur. Along with that, we had an additional $36 million for county roads and bridges, $50 million for the Blue Line LRT, an additional $40 million for Greater Minnesota Transit, and then $131.8 million of what they're now calling named projects, what we used to call earmarks, and you'll see that as a pattern throughout these three major transportation funding bills. Let me go into the specific details about new revenue for transportation on an ongoing basis. We have worked for years on all sorts of varieties of options to try to get around the gas tax, I guess. And finally, all of this work has paid off, and let me just quickly list them. Right from the beginning, the House and the Senate seemed to be in sync in terms of being willing to raise tab fees, and the result of that will be an additional 240 million per, for the biennium. Then there was a new fee that was discussed in the House, ended up passing the House, was never heard in the Senate, but became law, and that is the imposition of a 50-cent retail delivery fee on orders over $100. And that is going to produce $60 million per year. And then kind of the surprise of the session, the gas tax came back, it's actually never heard in either committee of either House, but it became part of the conference report, and it indexes the motor fuel excise tax to the construction cost index, and it's capped at 3% per year, and basically by fiscal year '27, it'll equal a 5-cent gas tax and produce about $150 million over the next two years. Then there's the sales tax on motor vehicles, and that is going to produce $40 million for roads. And then finally, over the next several years, ending in fiscal year 2033, we'll have the full transfer of the sales tax on auto parts, which will be very significant. Combined, this produces something better than 6 to 7 hundred million dollars per year in new revenue on an ongoing basis, which the chair may recall was something we were trying to attain back in 2013. So you, it's taken us a while, a decade, but we've finally done what the study said we should do to restore the transportation system of Minnesota. That takes me to the next step, which is to tell you briefly the significant investment in trunk highway bonds, which will be $599 million, and it essentially goes to four places. 87.4 million to MinDOT facilities, an additional $153 million for corridors of commerce, an additional $200 million for state road construction, and then $166.15 million for what, what they're calling named projects, earmarks around the state, and that totals 599 million. That then takes us to the capital bonding bill, which was a work in progress for better than three years, but now that it passed, it's going to be a, provide a significant investment in transportation around the state, so let me quickly outline that. Local roads in the undesignated column, 78.95 million. Named road projects, the earmarks is additional, 146.42 million dollars. And then there was the 18 million dollars from the capital bonding, or the capital budget bill, for a total of 243 million. And that is against our platform proposal, which was 250 million. It's the first time since I've been doing this job we've met that target, so very significant for local county roads.
And we tend to set the target high.
Yeah, tend to set the target very high. That takes us to local bridges, and that breaks out this way, 67 million dollars for undesignated, and 41.9 million for named bridge projects, earmarks. The additional 18 million that was referenced earlier for local roads, for a total of 126 million, which essentially matched the governor's proposal, and we're very, very happy with that. That's the highest number that we've ever, ever achieved. And then another one of our platform positions that's important to your county and every county around the state, which is the local road wetland replacement program. We had hoped that they would match the governor's proposal on that, which was our platform position, which was 18 million in bonds, 7 million in cash. They did put in 12 million in bonds, and so we still got some work to do there, and that'll be one of our top priorities for next year. I'll just quickly hit a couple of other transportation subjects inside the capital bonding bill. The Highway Railroad grade crossings received an additional 3.6 million. Port development, 18.09 million. Safe routes to school, 2.4 million. Active transportation, 1.2 million. Minnesota rail service improvement, 9.6 million, and an additional $3 million for Greater Minnesota Transit. When you added it all up, it comes in just under 500 million, 493.71 million dollars. And as I referenced in the beginning of my remarks, that totals 3.8 billion dollars in an ongoing dedicated sources of revenue over the next four years. Last thing I want to say is it's been a pleasure for me and our organization to work with your county engineer, Ryan Philges, who, I know you know how good he is, but I get to meet with him at least monthly throughout the year, and of course, he is one of the favorite subjects of the legislators to call in to testify on these bills at key times, and he does an excellent job for them. and he does an excellent job for them, for us, and for you. And it's been a lot of fun working with him. So with that, I would conclude and be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, it all looked very positive. We appreciate your work on that. We know when we go into this stuff that, you know, how hard it is, and to have our lobbyists in there and being able to explain to the legislators what's important, what's not, makes a huge difference, so we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
I guess during transportation, as good a time as any to bring it up, it really could be on any issue, things like that. But you talk about, you know, in this case, you know, things are never heard in any committee but became law. Well, that's great, depending if you're on offense or defense, if it's more transportation dollars, but when I hear the phrase "not heard in either committee and became law," and then also the importance of calling in to testify, like we talked about with Ryan and things like that, is that, how do we, if we're not on the offense and more defense on something, how do we, how are we players in that if we don't have that opportunity to testify or things happen without committee hearings? And maybe more in general, not transportation.
Yeah, I think--
I mean, that's a plus if it's what we want. It's a negative if it's something we're trying to slow down.
I think it covers up an additional set of facts on an issue like the gas tax, which has been before them in committees, passed on the House floor, passed on the Senate floor in alternate years over the last five years. It's a well-understood issue, but I think what happens is the chemistry of conference committees, the overwhelming historic opportunity to have this kind of money available after having tried to get this done for a decade and a half without success, those combination of pieces bring in that reality on occasion.
And, you know, and gas tax is a terrible example of my concern, because that's one that's talked about every session all the time, everybody kind of understands that. But, you know, I don't necessarily want administration or anybody to where we start to have laws that haven't been heard in committee, things like that.
Yeah, Commissioner, I would just add, and I think Commissioner Pep, you're making an excellent point, that would or is problematic if that happens. If I think about the legislation where we're talking about really new policy and legislation, that is, I can't think of an example really where that's happened, so I'm thinking, for example, about cannabis and paid family leave and, you know, lots of other legislation that impacts counties that was new. And all of that legislation had significant numbers of hearings. It is, I think one could argue it shouldn't happen for any legislation, even for something as familiar as the gas tax, but it's pretty unlikely to happen when it's something that's entirely new or unaware.
It's interesting, though, I mean, obviously, the gas tax was something that came of as a surprise, but it's not something that hasn't been discussed. This thing has been discussed, I mean, I know, I've been on transportation committees for, I'm in my 13th year now as a county commissioner, and we have discussed this, and there has been numerous talks with legislators on what, how important a gas tax increase would be for the state of Minnesota and rural Minnesota. So it's, maybe it wasn't discussed this year before it came in, but it certainly has been discussed over the years.
And just to be clear, I'm not defending it, I'm just simply telling you what happened.
Yeah, and again, this says what, Mr. Chair? This is why the gas tax is a horrible example, but I would point to the environment committee, and we don't have a big, a lot of environmental stuff. I mean, we have things that were not passed, something may be heard in one house or the other, but not passed in that house that through the process still happens. So I should have waited until the end and just asked it more in general, but doesn't that, shouldn't that scare us as an advocacy group that you just kind of lose your opportunity to have that input if it's not that open, transparent process?
I think we--
Well-taken, yeah.
Well-well taken. Thank you, Kevin.
Some of that, I think you're up.
Nancy can be up. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Again, Nancy Seleski, and it's a pleasure to be here with you this morning. Oftentimes, in Health and Human Services, we'll have one large appropriations bill that covers both Health and Human Services. For the last couple of years, they've separated them, so I'm going to highlight the two big bills. The first one was the Human Services Omnibus Bill chaired by Senator Hoffman from Champlin, Representative Mohamed Noor from Minneapolis. $1.35 billion in new spending for DHS in the first biennium, and 1.56 in the second. Really important, something that we've been working on a long time, is the county cost share relative to people that are at the Anoka Metropolitan Regional Treatment Center, and they've been, in this case, what we passed this year was we looked at those specifically that have been committed as mentally ill and dangerous. So they're waiting for a bed, another state-operated bed at St. Peter, as an example. Counties have no ability to effectuate that transfer, yet when AMRTC says they no longer need that level of care at AMRTC, counties pay 100% of the freight for that. And that just went up, I think, from $1,700 a day to about $2,300 a day, so it doesn't take long for those dollars to add up. We've been talking and talking about this. This year, we made some progress in that we will, we have a reprieve for the next two years, saving counties 13.2 million over that two-year period. And again, this is specific to mentally ill and dangerous folks, so we were happy to see that, that progress. Combined with that is the so-called 48-hour rule, which I think you're all familiar with that the legislature passed some time ago that said folks that have mental health issues should not be languishing in our jails. So they basically passed legislation that says you've got to get them into AMRTC within 48 hours. The state has been out of compliance with that for some time because we don't have the beds, we don't have the staff, et cetera. So litigation has been brought, I think Attorney General Ellison says he's defending 16 different cases on this. So to that end, they created a task force this year, and again, Attorney General Ellison is the co-chair, and then DHS Commissioner Jody Harpstead is the other co-chair. This was also worked on, I want to mention, by the sheriffs and the county attorneys, they're struggling with this issue. There are two county representatives that will be working on this task force, including your Angie Youngerberg, who has been working on the Direct Care and Treatment Work Group forever and ever, and so she will be at the table on that. Their first meeting is scheduled for August, or before August 1st. They want to report, the legislature wants to report by next February, so it's a very fast turnaround, but hopefully, there'll be some answers in terms of resources which are needed. The other main issue in the Hoffman-Noor bill related to rate increases for a variety of direct care providers, and I think, yeah, you can see the list up there, it's everything from adult day services, employment services, PCA services, waivered services, and also a much-needed rate increase for the non-emergency medical transportation providers and ambulance services as well. So that did happen this year. I think moving on to the next slide, then we'll look at the Health and Human Services Omnibus Bill. This is chaired by Senator Melissa Wicklin Bloomington and Representative Tina Liebling from Olmsted County. That bill appropriates $1.4 billion in new spending, again, for DHS in the first biennium, and 1.5 billion in the second. And then the Department of Health, MDH, also receives new spending in the amount of $284 million in the first biennium, and $233 million in '26-'27. These bills create two new state agencies, so we're going to be working with a couple new agencies, one dealing with the Department of Children, Youth, and Families, and one dealing with Direct Care and Treatment. So it's too new to know how this is all going to work at this point, but the idea is to take existing staff and resources from other agencies, including the Department of Human Services, Department of Health, Education, and Public Safety, and move those folks into the new agencies. In terms of, people have been saying, well, what do you think about another agency or two? In terms of the Direct Care and Treatment Agency, I'm thinking, or we're thinking, that that might be a good thing, because right now, they get into that huge queue with DHS that has so many funding requests, et cetera. I think having an agency that's focusing all of its time on those that are sitting in these facilities is maybe going to be a really good thing. So more to come, of course, on that, that was always in the details. Next item I would mention is the legislature did put money into IT quite a bit, over, I think it's $135 million. Everything from service delivery transformation, integrated services for children and families, Mets functionality, we've been talking about that for a long time. Hopefully, this will take away the need for the green screen technology that county workers are still wrestling with. They also put money into MMIS and Minture Technology, so we hope to see some real progress there. Next item I'd mention is public health, or excuse me, behavioral health. They did put $4 million of seed money into the 988 National Suicide Prevention Lifeline. After that, however, it shifts to telecommunications fees that everybody will be paying on there as part of their cell phone bill. They put additional money into mobile crisis grants, which is something that's very important to Human Services. They also established a tribal mobile crisis response model, and they're putting, they put money into startup grants for prospective psychiatric residential treatment facility sites. So again, looking at, we need more resources, let's, they did put some money into that. Also into schooling, behavioral health, first episode psychosis. They created a grant to the Center for Rural Behavioral Health, which is at Minskew-Mankato, that was Senator Friends and Representative Frederick from this area, that happened. There was also a rate increase for mental health services. And then I do want to mention bonding. For the last several bonding years, they have put $10 million into behavioral health crisis facilities, and they did that again this year. So I think we'll continue, hopefully, to see those investments, important investments in mental health. In terms of childcare, they put additional money into the basic sliding fee assistance. They funded Family First Prevention at $25 million. There's money that goes to kinship navigator services, family assessment response, and also evidence-based practice grants. In terms of economic supports, there was an increase for general assistance for the first time in many years, and significant money put into food security. Public health, also strong investment there, $25 million into emergency preparedness. They created a public health response contingency account, so that will be sitting there in the event that there's something that occurs again. $23 million into transforming the public health system, money, $21 million into Healthy Beginnings, Healthy Grants Program, money for lead remediation in schools and childcare centers. And they also put about $3.2 million into the AmeriCorps Heading Home Corps, which helps people that are facing housing challenges. Other miscellaneous, I want to mention that there is no continuous medical assistance eligibility for children. That does not have to be reviewed every six months or a year, whatever the period was. They eliminated effective January 1 of next year, there'll be no medical assistance copays or any shared costs for people that are in medical assistance, and they increased the AMPFIP housing COLA this year as well. Finally, I just want to mention that Chair Liebling had a number of issues in her bill that looks at healthcare affordability, things like, you know, changing the drug spend in the Medicaid formula from managed care to fee-for-service, looking at the universal health care, the public option, things like that. In the end, they're going to be studying that over the interim, and we'll hear more about that going forward, but right now, that is where that is. I also want to mention that early in session, in March, the counties received $36 million in a separate bill for the purpose of unwinding the public health emergency, and that was effective July 1, so counties should begin to be seeing those dollars, and this is for the purpose of recertifying those folks that were on medical assistance, 1.5 million, where those recertifications did not take place during the public health emergencies, so that, those dollars are intended to help counties with that process. They also gave some money to DHS Central Office Operations for this purpose, as well as Minture. With that, I too want to call out your staff, I've worked very closely with both Phil Klassen and Angie Youngerberg, and they're just the best in the business. It was such a pleasure to hear about the Yellow Line Project, because as Phil indicated, we worked on that for a number of years. It got caught up in a giant appropriations bill. Bob, you'll remember when the whole budget went down, it was Governor Dayton at the time, and it was tucked in there, that was the first time, I was like, okay, now we start again. But just want to mention that they're wonderful to work for, such an asset to all counties. And also want to mention Senator Friends was such a big part of that, as well as Senator Rosen and others, the Yellow Line Project, so just happy to hear about that one.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair and members, I'll take the remaining slides, and in the interest of time, I'm going to pop through them pretty quick, you know, it's just a way of emphasizing that so much happened that's impacting county governments, most all of it, positive news that we were advocating, some of it that we were trying to either moderate or just make some adjustments to that didn't happen. But starting with community corrections, a very successful session in public safety and community corrections, we have been trying for many years to get a significant increase and a single new formula for all counties for probation services. Carly Stark is unable to be with us today, but who we work with, along with myself, is just sort of a supporting cast. This year, the legislature did pass the county's recommendations for a new single formula. They did not quite fully fund that formula. We wanted $56 million, 43 million was put in, but a significant increase, historic increase in community corrections and probation services money along with the new formula. Also, along with that, came a community supervisory advisory task force, and there will be expectations and adjustments in trying to make sure that all counties and all of the three service systems are following some standards and protocols in terms of how best to deliver evidence-based probation services in community corrections going forward. There was $4 million put into armored radio grants, which is far, far below what is needed. Would just point out that those monies that were in that public safety one-time grant money that I mentioned earlier that came in the tax bill, that money could also be used for equipment like radio grants. Then there was $70 million one-time put into community crime and violence prevention, and Carly, in her summary that is included in our 50, 60-page document, highlights a number of other changes that impact counties that happened in the corrections and public safety area. I want to call out also in other county successes, going to the next slide, there was a housing bill that had a record historic $1 billion of one-time money, but a $1 billion investment in housing, everything from housing, single-family homeownership to rental property, to, you know, supporting new infrastructure as well as rental assistance. Virtually every part of the housing continuum had additional support provided in that bill. Senator, Pat mentioned earlier the environment bill, which we also summarized, significant changes happened in environment and energy. It's a reminder to me to call out Senator Friends as well, who is very impactful, and we go to, we work with Senator Friends on virtually all issue areas. He's a very influential member of the Senate caucus and the chamber, but on environment and energy legislation, as well as the duty disability that I'll talk about in a little bit. There's also funding in there for solid waste management in other aspects of the budget as well-- as well as money for emerald ashbore response, healthier water, and significant opportunities in environment and climate resiliency as a part of this legislative session. In general government, just to mention a couple of things, there was a local compensation limit where we were the only state in the country that had, where that decision-making was not fully in the hands of local governments. That language in law statute has been repealed. An open meeting law change, which will give some flexibility in medical exceptions for public bodies. And then many election law changes and ongoing funding that comes with that. And then finally, on the, a number of other county impacts. Paid family, a medical leave law that will be effective beginning January 1 of 2026, that will also be the date at which a new premiums assessment that funds that program for all employers, public and private, will become effective. The jobs and labor bill included a requirement for employers to provide earned sick and safe time, one hour of earned sick and safe time for every 30 hours worked. There were significant changes to the Public Employee Labor Relations Act that will impact county, city, all local public governments. There were significant changes that were authored in the Senate by Senator Friends for para-duty disability reforms, both that provide additional enhanced benefit for fire and police officers who experience trauma in the workplace so that they can get the care that they need, evidence-based care to support restoration of full health and return to work. And then eligibility for duty disability continues if the illness is unable to be, if the individual is unable to be restored to health. And of course, cannabis legalization also happened. I just want to particularly give a shout out to my colleagues at AMC who really took the lead on this legislation. We have a bit more bandwidth issues at MICA, and so we weren't in the lead on this legislation necessarily, but definitely supported through letters and other conversations as best we could, the maintenance of continuation of some local control and that there is some funding for counties and city governments going forward. I, in closing, happy to stand for any questions, but really want to thank as well Bob Meyer, Josh Milo, Lisa Malinsky, who I work with from your fiscal staff, Laura Elvabach, who I think I saw come in earlier when we started, who has just been a key human resource for not just our association, but I believe AMC as well, and just a key leader on much of this legislation, like paid family leave and earned sick and safe time and the PELRA The duty disability as all of that legislation was moving forward, we relied on Laura quite a bit, as well as Bob and Josh. So happy to take any questions, specifics, aura, if there's something that we haven't covered that you want to ask about.
Any questions?
I don't have any.
Comments?
It's-
Great job.
This was a very comprehensive type session. I appreciate how much you can keep up with it. I have questions just with the cannabis stuff, but that's, I just want, I don't know the effect of that's going to be, but whatever. That's not a, that's the way it is. We'll find out.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, I'm assuming that you're not asking about the effect of cannabis, but the effect of how it plays out-
Politics. I was referring, socially, the whole thing. I have no, it's, when I look at other states, you know, I-
In all seriousness, that is, though, something that we will be following along with a lot of these areas to try and help get information out to staff as best we can. That in particular is one that is the office of cannabis, State Office of Cannabis is now getting set up, and the regulatory structure needs to be put in place. There's a lot that needs to come forward yet to see how that plays out, not only in the politics, but in the implementation, and we'll be following that.
You know, it's like with the open, like vents when they'd have it, or apartments, apparently, too. It's like, you know, is it going to be like cigarettes, you know, where you can't smoke and, yeah, so I don't know, it's just, it's my reservations, whatever.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I may just add, I appreciate the work of our MICA partners here. You know, one of the things that I've been sharing with the board over the last few years is how our state and federal revenue has been lagging behind the increases in local property tax. And this money comes at a great time in terms of trying to respond to the inflationary pressures we're seeing, the increases in staff costs. I don't know that people are going to be as excited about the local property tax levy, thinking that this is going to kind of remove that. That's not going to be the case, but it certainly will limit the amount of increase needed at the local levy and, or level. And so I do appreciate the work both AMC and MICA have done at the legislature to kind of push these issues in a way that's resulted in a positive impact on our budget.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we will go back to our Commissioner reports on committees. Kip, you want to start us out today?
I would be happy to, Mr. Chair. After our last board meeting, we had mayors and clerks the other night over in St. Clair on kind of a stormy night, and Eric Weller, our new emergency manager, was there. Did a great job laying out his duties at the county and his new role. Been in the system for a long time, helping us out indirectly, but now he's a full-time employee of ours. And then the deputy was there also to share some things he had going on yesterday morning. I had a very short week, actually. And yesterday morning, I was over in Wasika County for Ditch 11, and we had to pick up another member of that joint meeting because the sewer was not in that watershed, and now they are. So Commissioner Rolfing from the Sura County joined us in that, and got that done. Now we can move forward on the re-termination benefits of that. Last night, we had our MVAC annual meeting and gave out the awards for the outstanding people in the communities that are improving their lives through MVAC or helping out MVAC and trying to help other people. So that is my report, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mark.
I just have the mayor and clerks that we had, because it's just in a week's time, so, and that was well attended, and I did appreciate our law enforcement, the gentleman there. Yep. So that's all I really have.
All right, Kevin.
Mayors and clerk has been mentioned. On the 12th, I was at the True Transportation Advisory Committee meeting, and then on the 14th, the Goberba, right of Blueworth River Basin Authority, once a year, the Policy Committee and the Technical Committee meet jointly. We did that here in Mankato on the 14th. That was all my meetings. We just remind everybody, the upcoming is 163rd with County Fair Thursday through Sunday. Hope to see everybody there.
All right. Patty.
Slow week, mayors and clerks was the only thing I had to say.
All right. And, well, I had mayors and clerks, and the same day, I had an Eco Transportation Committee meeting, and then yesterday, I had an annual detox meeting in New Ulm. So that was slow for me, too, for one week, but anybody wanting to make a motion to recess?
Second.
Got a motion to second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same, for recess.
Good job, Mr. Chair. It was MICA joining us.